Okay.
Good evening everyone and welcome to the Newcastle Town Board meeting of December ninth, twenty twenty five. The board has been in executive session and I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we have a short meeting tonight. Rob, would you start us off? And I think what we have are just a listing of the administrative items.
Yep, that's all we have for work session tonight. So we have the adoption of minutes from November of two thousand twenty five. Also, the adoption of the monthly reports from November of two thousand twenty five. We have two street permit, uh, street opening permit bond releases. Uh, two thousand twenty four dash twenty one and two thousand twenty four dash uh twenty three. Uh, we have the authorization to retain the annual service agreement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant uh for the onsite calibration and factory recommended maintenance. That's with HAC, that's in the amount of twenty three thousand three oh seven. Uh, we have the authorization to accept the service agreement for the primary disinfection system at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. That's with Asylum, uh, that covers two annual visits, a total amount of ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, we have the au- authorization to utilize the textile bin recovery services. So we're actually gonna change over from uh USA again, which is a company we're currently using, to a company called Helpsee. Uh, they have increased the amount that they guarantee to reuse and recycle from uh ninety percent, which is the current company, up to ninety five percent, which is uh Helpsee. So we're looking to approve that. Uh, we have the authorization to approve the UMR and Mepco health insurance premium rates for two thousand twenty six. That was at a four percent increase. We have the authorization to award the bid for the two thousand twenty six coach bus transportation services. That's for J and R Tours. Uh, we had two bids, they were the low bidder that was able to provide the insurance that we were looking for. Uh, we have the authorization to solicit bids for the two thousand twenty six summer camp transportation services. Uh, we have the authorization to approve the professional engineering services for the uh New York State DEC Enhanced Dam Safety Monitoring Program for the years two thousand twenty six and twenty seven. Uh, that's with Tectonic, that covers the upper mink- upper Minkle Dam and Duck Pond Dam. Uh, upper Minkle Dam is fifty two thousand four ninety annually. The Duck Pond Dam is twenty four thousand four ninety six annually. Uh, these are services we've had over the last few years and uh the prices are consistent with what we've paid in the last few years. Uh, we have the authorization to adopt the twenty twenty six preliminary budget with amendments to the non-union salary schedule. So that is attached in the resolution. Uh, there is a page of some uh budget changes that were incorporated to uh uh, they were used to incorporate the salary schedule into the budget. Uh, we're looking for the board's approval for that. Uh, the authorization to approve the year-end budget adjustments. Uh, our comptroller is typically authorized to make any budget adjustments to balance the budget uh prior to our audit. This is the authorization for that. And we're looking for the authorization to set a public hearing on the battery energy storage systems uh legislation that is uh set for, we're intending to set it for January thirteenth of two thousand and twenty six.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And may I have a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, um, Rob, any announcements?
Uh, no announcements.
Okay, um, for my supervisor's report, I would like to um remind everyone that this is um very bittersweet, but this is Jeremy's last uh town board meeting upon his retirement from the town board, but not necessarily going away for good. Uh, Jeremy, uh, we had a really nice celebration uh before the meeting. I just wanna give a very quick recap of Jeremy's service to the town, which is extensive. Jeremy started uh working with the town as town prosecutor from two thousand ten to twenty fifteen. He's been a town board member since twenty sixteen. He was deputy supervisor from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one and then again from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, each a two-year term. He was Newcastle Acting Town Supervisor in twenty twenty one. And he's been town board liaison to the Newcastle Police Department um from the time of his uh service as Newcastle Town Board Member. So we had a wonderful, very poignant and moving ceremony with a lot of speakers, including all of the town board members. Uh, town uh town justice Doug Kraus, Rob Dearie, town administrator, and Sabrina Charlie Hall, and Jim uh Jim Carroll, chief of police, gave remarks. Jill Shapiro came back, former um town administrator, and gave some remarks. And Chris Burdick, New York State Assemblyman, and Vedat Gashi, chairman of the Board of Legislators, presented uh proclamations to Jeremy. I believe he's gonna have on the Westchester Jumbotron January eighth, twenty twenty six, as Jeremy's Seland Day. So, you know, go to White Plains and go look at the Jumbotron. And Jeremy will take a picture and send it to us. Um, so I I wanna thank Jeremy. I think um the theme was uh his incredible public service, generosity of spirit, generosity with his time, and um really clear, clear perception of the issues and um really moral clarity moving us forward. So Jeremy, we will miss you tremendously and we thank you for your service. And we will continue to count on your sage advice. I'm sure you'll uh you'll be picking up the phone when I'm when I'm calling, right?
I will, of course.
Hopefully, um.
Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the Newcastle Town Board meeting of December ninth, twenty twenty five. The board has been in executive session and I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, we have a short meeting tonight. Rob, uh would you start us off and I think what we have are just a listing of the administrative items.
Yep, that's all we have for work session tonight. Uh so we have the adoption of minutes from November of two thousand twenty five. Uh also the adoption of the monthly reports from November of two thousand twenty five. We have two street permit, uh street opening permit bond releases, uh two thousand twenty four dash twenty one and two thousand twenty four dash uh twenty three. Uh we have the authorization to retain the annual service agreement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, uh for the onsite calibration and factory recommended maintenance. That's with Hock. That's in the amount of twenty three thousand three oh seven. Uh we have the authorization to accept the service agreement for the primary disinfection system at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. That's with Asylum. Uh that covers two annual visits, a total amount of ten thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh we have the auth- authorization to utilize the textile bin recovery services. So we're actually gonna change over from uh USA again, which is a company we're currently using, to a company called Helpsee. Uh they have increased the amount that they guarantee to reuse and recycle from uh ninety percent, which is the current company, up to ninety five percent, which is uh Helpsee. So we're looking to approve that. Uh we have the authorization to approve the U M R and Mebco health insurance premium rates for two thousand twenty six. That was at a four percent increase. We have the authorization to award the bid for the two thousand twenty six coach bus transportation services. That's for J and R Tours. Uh we had two bids. They were the low bidder that was able to provide the insurance that we were looking for. Uh we have the authorization to solicit bids for the two thousand twenty six summer camp transportation services. Uh we have the authorization to approve the uh professional engineering services for the uh New York State D E C Enhanced Dam Safety Monitoring Program for the years two thousand twenty six and twenty seven. Uh that's with Tectonic. That covers the upper mink- Upper Minkle Dam and Duck Pond Dam. Uh Upper Minkle Dam is fifty two thousand four ninety annually. The Duck Pond Dam is twenty four thousand four ninety six annually. Uh these are services we've had over the last few years and uh the prices are consistent with what we've paid in the last few years. Uh we have the authorization to adopt the twenty twenty six preliminary budget with amendments to the non-union salary schedule. So that is attached in the resolution. Uh there is a page of some uh budget changes that were incorporated to uh uh they were used to incorporate the salary schedule into the budget. Uh we're looking for the board's approval for that. Uh the authorization to approve the year-end budget adjustments. Uh our controller is typically authorized to make any budget adjustments to balance the budget uh prior to our audit. This is the authorization for that. And we're looking for the authorization to set a public hearing on the battery energy storage systems uh legislation that is uh set for, we're intending to set it for January thirteenth of two thousand and twenty six.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And may I have a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um Rob, any announcements?
Uh no announcements.
Okay, um for my supervisor's report, I would like to um remind everyone that this is um very bittersweet, but this is Jeremy's last uh town board meeting upon his retirement from the town board, but not necessarily going away for good. Uh Jeremy, uh we had a really nice celebration uh before the meeting. I just wanna give a a very quick recap of Jeremy's service to the town, which is extensive. Jeremy started uh working with the town as to town prosecutor from two thousand ten to twenty fifteen. He's been a town board member since twenty sixteen. He was deputy supervisor from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one and then again from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, each a two-year term. He was Newcastle Acting Town Supervisor in twenty twenty one. And he's been town board liaison to the Newcastle Police Department um from the time of his uh service as Newcastle Town Board Member. So we had a wonderful, very poignant and moving ceremony with a lot of speakers, including all of the town board members. Uh town uh town justice Doug Kraus, Rob Dearie, Town Administrator, and Sabrina Charlie Hall, and Jim uh Jim Carroll, Chief of Police, gave remarks. Jill Shapiro came back, former um town administrator, and gave some remarks. And Chris Burdick, New York State Assemblyman, and Vedat Gashi, Chairman of the Board of Legislators, presented uh proclamations to Jeremy. I believe he's gonna have on the Westchester Jumbotron, January eighth, twenty twenty six, as Jeremy Soland Day. So, you know, go to White Plains and go look at the Jumbotron. And Jeremy will take a picture and send it to us. Um so I I wanna thank Jeremy. I think um the theme was uh his incredible public service, generosity of spirit, generosity with his time, and um really clear, clear perception of the issues and um really moral clarity moving us forward. So Jeremy, we will miss you tremendously and we thank you for your service and we will continue to count on your sage advice. I'm sure you'll uh you'll be picking up the phone when I'm when I'm calling, right?
I will, of course.
Hopefully. Um okay. Now, just moving on, I would like to take this opportunity. This is also the last town board meeting of my two-year term and as uh my first term as supervisor. And I just wanna go over just a few things that we have all accomplished together in the past two years. And I know as Jeremy likes to say, and I fully agree with this, it's not about the I, it's about the we. And these are things that we have all accomplished together as town board members, as um members of our very talented, hardworking staff, and all of the volunteers we have working on the various boards and committees. Um so I just wanna go over a little recap of everything we've done and gone through over the last two years. On um in the area of vibrancy and community amenities, we went through uh an envisioning process within Vision Newcastle where we looked at the town property or surrounding the train station. We heard from many community members about their vision for town-owned land and we got a clear picture that people wanted uh more walkability, uh better traffic patterns, not so much giving up the parking lot for housing, but we we got a lot of feedback from that process and we appreciated the the high level of community participation. Um and in terms of envisioning and planning, more recently, we are about to seat an Economic Revitalization Advisory Task Force to address um vibrancy in our commercial downtown Chappaqua and what we can do to support the commercial and retail business. And we have a set of really talented, knowledgeable individuals who are gonna be seated on that committee. In terms of recreation and arts, we um we expanded recreation facilities for our summer camp. There's been huge demand for summer camps and we have expanded that uh to a significant degree. We have Amsterdam Park renovations going on with indoor space upgrades, bathrooms, heat pumps, and expanded buses for trips. Um so I I hope that people appreciate now that uh kids can can attend the camps at a much increased rate. Uh we have arts initiatives. We have reestablished the Arts and Culture Committee. Um Jennifer Klein helped very much in that regard as a liaison and you really brought that committee together, Jen. Thank you so much. And the committee has done uh really stellar work, uh starting with the street uh public mural program, which you can see under the bridge now. We have four beautiful murals and we will be continuing with the mural program. We are looking towards enhancement of the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center. We hired a consultant uh which who we hope to engage next year on a permanent basis, um who will bring us some financial planning for the for the venue and some programming, um and a vision for programming there. Um in terms of environment and sustainability, we have addressed some watershed and land protection issues. We created the Indian Brook Curtin Gorge Overlay District, which is a cooperative watershed protection project with five municipalities um to protect uh safe drinking water. In terms of local laws and safety, we have uh local laws improving uh building inspection, fire protection, and sprinkler requirements, addressing electric ve- vehicle chargers, batteries, and solar charging stations. So to um enhance those um new new um equipment. We've had a an amendment to the property maintenance law to clarify safe access for emergency personnel, but also to ensure that we protect native and pollinator gardens. In terms of community building and public well-being, we have expanded community engagement programs um and supported some impactful events. Uh we created a committee on mental resilience, which has introduced the Into the Light Walk for uh mental health awareness and they are now having monthly mental health meetups. Uh we've had uh the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee has, with our support, has instituted a neighbors' bench program. We brought back A O K Day with the help of a residence. We have, we established the Committee on Inclusion and Belonging, which brought in some very impactful programs such as the Narrative Four Program. And we recently had a a very impactful and meaningful theater performance, letters from Anne and Martin, which was about Anne Frank and Martin Luther King and and very similar themes that touched their lives. We had a break the cycle six-mile ride to support victims of domestic violence. Uh we uh have had an International Day of Peace recognition where we dedicated a native garden to um to peace. We have a native peace garden. We've recognized uh the impacts of wars and conflicts on innocent civilians and uh centered the value of peace in front of town hall marked by a peace pole. We have, in terms of community building, we've strengthened collaboration with the Chappaqua Central School District, including a new intermunicipal agreement. And we work together jointly with them on school resource officers. Uh we've increased our support for senior citizens. We adopted changes to senior and disability-related property tax exemptions to align with updated New York State uh regulations to help seniors remain in their home. We have supported the New York, uh the um Newcastle Police Department in their launch of the Blue Envelope Program for individuals with autism and there is now a special registry and this was the product of a very strong advocacy of a resident, Duff Bailey. Um we reestablished the Airport Advisory Committee and um supported our participation in an intermunicipal airport master plan task force along with the City of Rye, Village of Rye Brook, Portchester, Greenwich, and uh Town of Newcastle and Town of Ride, providing unifor- to provide unified community input on the Westchester County Airport's master plan. And we formed a municipal consortium for um to intervene in Con Edison rate increase uh case before the P S C. This was the first time that Westchester County was represented. In terms of walkability and infrastructure, we have committed to the Complete Streets Project, which is a sidewalk in Millwood connecting Mill- Millwood to Getney Park and West Orchard School. We have committed to a sidewalk on Route one seventeen from Salem Road to the mobile station, which we will um do a feasibility study on next year. And uh as hopefully you all know, we have been awarded a five million tab grant for the chapline and we have started work there on the chapline. A survey and environmental work has been completed and the design will begin, design work will begin um this winter. On safety and transportation, we have introduced a safe driving initiative and we are working to reduce residential road speed limits from thirty miles an hour to twenty five um through a traffic study by Tectonic. We have had a preliminary report. We are receiving a final report in January. We've advocated, along with the Summers Town Road Action Network uh in Millwood, uh stretching from Millwood through the Town of Austining for safety improvements to Summers Town Road. And we um we had some success where the, after our advocacy work and letters from the town board and various other um representatives, the governor uh committed funds to paving that road. Uh we have worked on equity for Millwood and prioritized projects such as the Complete Streets project that I explained. Uh we expanded our holiday lighting in Millwood and uh worked on completing ADA compliant walkways and renovations of the Millwood Playground and tennis courts. And finally, in the government and operations area and fiscal management, we have reintroduced quarterly financial presentations, quarterly project updates, which uh you know hadn't been done for a while, so we can keep track of projects and our finances much better. We adopted a child abuse prevention policy for rec and park staff and volunteers for children's programming. We have expanded professional development opportunities for the town board by encouraging and supporting attendance at the New York Association of Towns Training. And we are uh, we will be conducting a town hall needs and feasibility assessment. We will be um appointing a firm to do that. And we continue to pass budgets under the tax gap. So those are just all of the accomplishments that we've seen through in the past couple of years. And I just wanted to give a recap, a recap of that. Um did I miss anything? Is there any anything anyone
Comprehensible.
would like to add? I tried to go quickly, so I know um some things might not have been very clear, but I I thought we should do that at our last meeting. Yeah, Holly, you?
I think you got everything.
Okay, all right. So now, let's see. Next on our agenda, we uh would like to talk about the Westchester Power Program and we have some Yeah, thank you. Sorry, uh Rob, do you have a town administrator's report? I just skipped over that.
Yeah, I just want to brief it. Um I just wanna mention, after uh probably about eighteen long months, today we finally switched over our new phone system. Uh it was not without a few bugs. Uh we were told there wouldn't be any, but that never happens. Uh so uh hopefully residents, when they're calling in, aren't seeing an issue. We're not aware of any issues reaching anybody. Uh we're still trying to figure out the phones, the uh voicemail system, et cetera, so uh bear with us for the next day or two until we figure that out, but uh
Okay, but that won't affect um residents, people calling in from the outside?
No.
Just internal?
Yep, that's what they were doing all day, making sure every line went through and and everything was connected and it is.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's just uh users getting used to the system now. That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, so uh I'd like to turn our attention to the Westchester Power Program, which has um regrettably been discontinued, but we would like to recognize individuals in the community, volunteers who worked very hard on this program through the Sustainability Advisory Board. Um for nearly a decade, uh Westchester Power has enabled residents to uh communities to deliver clean energy to to our residents. They made a very difficult but necessary decision to discontinue their program due to new government um regulations, uh creating a regulatory framework that made their work not no longer feasible, at least for the moment. Uh for the residents and small businesses within the twenty-six municipalities, there will be no disruption to electric service. Power will continue to be supplied reliably through Con Edison or your local provider. Um and Sustainable Westchester um expressed their gratitude for the strong partnership of municipal leaders who supported the program. And uh they have cited enormous contributions of the program to regional climate and clean energy goals. In total, the program has reduced greenhouse gas emissions by more than one point five million metric tons, which is the equivalent of moving thirty-five thousand gas-powered cars from the road and uh which we all consider an extraordinary achievement. And today I wanna recognize the S A B members who helped to institute the Westchester Power Program in town. And we have some certificates of recognition. And we have one of the members here who's here from the very outset, Steve Wolk, who um after I present some certificates, might want to say a few words, if that's correct. So I'm gonna come up to the microphone and I'll ask all of you to come up. I'm not sure that everybody's here, but I have certificates to present. And uh I will come up to the microphone and I'm sure we'll wanna take a few pictures too. Okay, so I will read, is this on? Yes, okay. So I'll read one of the certificates, um so that everyone knows what they say. So in recognition of your outstanding leadership and dedication in helping institute the Westchester Power Program, your commitment to advancing clean energy choices and reducing greenhouse gas emissions has made a meaningful and lasting impact on our community and environment. Through your vision, perseverance, and collaborative spirit, the Westchester Power Program has empowered residents, strengthened sustainability efforts, and set a model for responsible energy stewardship. So we we truly appreciate the time and commitment you've put into this and you've helped us a great deal in explaining the program to residents and making it successful for all the years it it's been in operations. And I hope that it comes back at some point. So I'd like to recognize Vivek, I guess, Tia. Please come up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and you can stand up here because we'll we'll take a picture.
Sure.
Um Uh Jennifer Mavis Flag. Alicia Malloy. Um Suzie Novak?
Yeah, she can.
Suzie's not here. Who wants to take this for, or if you like, we could keep it in town?
Yeah.
And, okay. Okay, Maxine Rubin? No? Uh Kathy Schreiber? Thank you, Kathy. Uh Kent Thomas? And last but not least, Steve Wolk. Steve, would you, would you like to say a few words before we take a picture? I'll be standing here.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Turn this way or that way?
Um turn this way.
Turn that way?
Yeah. Here is your. There you go.
Thanks. So I I I don't know how many people know, but um if we had just been one of the towns of the many towns that joined the Westchester Power Program, I think we could be very proud of ourselves, but we weren't just one of the towns. We were the very first town. So eight months after the uh the power program was enacted and and people were getting their power in that way, um we went and I I think maybe Jennifer and I looked at the the power and what it was costing us and variable rates and brown energy and green energy had spiked. So the people in the program were actually paying less, even for green energy, than folks in who were paying for brown energy at that time. So it's pretty obvious, this was the right thing to do. We were not only saving the environment, we were actually saving the town money. Pretty easy decision to make. Why wouldn't everybody make that decision? But back at the time, when it was first, uh when they first started the program, we were the very first town to do it. So it wasn't obvious at that time. In fact, I would say that the people in the S A B and the people on the town board spent political capital, could have looked pretty silly and could have looked like they were doing the wrong thing and looked bad to everybody. And these people, just if I can name them and and many of the people you you've said already, uh Jennifer Mavis Flag, uh Vivek Argostia, Suzie Novak, Kathy Schreiber, Maxine Margot, and Kent Thomas were part of this. Now, on the town board at the time, Rob Greenstein, Adam Brodsky, Lisa Katz, Jeremy Soland, uh uh McCauska. Again, it wasn't obvious at the time. It was obvious later, this was a great thing to do, but at that time, again, people maybe didn't look that good. So my my um suggestion to everybody who is a current town leader or a future town leader is do the hard work, even though it might not work out. Take uh political risk, even though it might not work out, 'cause these are the big things that really matter. And I think in the end, we can all say, yeah, things worked out. It won't always, but if we don't take those risks, we don't do the hard work, well, you know, what are we doing as leaders? So um thank you for everybody who was part of this and helped to make it real and I'm with you. Hopefully this will come back again soon. Thanks.
Thank you.
Still, I wanna say something very quickly. I'm sorry, I'm gonna take advantage of my last last time. You guys truly are are probably, this is not to the detriment of any other um uh committee or group of people who volunteer for the town, but you folks are one of the most active, brightest, most engaged and expend political capital on things that sometimes aren't the most popular, but for the right reasons. And again, not to the detriment of any other committee or group of people who help out, but you guys are really shy and above and and we are incredibly grateful. You've done a lot for us. So thank you. And I get choked up.
Very well said, Jeremy. Um some of us know the perils of being in public service and we take that on when we run and we serve on town boards. But volunteers don't usually do that. And but you guys have, you know, you were on the forefront of all of this and I'm sure you took some some political hits as well. Um I wasn't there at the time, but I can imagine the pushback that you might might have gotten. So, you know, I thank you as volunteers on on a town committee for doing that kind of hard work as well. So, okay, let's come up and take a picture so that we can prove that this happened.
Alright, ready, one, two, three, take a few. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
God you could make it.
We've done this many times.
Thank you, I really appreciated that bit of history. Do we have?
Well, this was the patent.
I mean, um, we changed some things, so. Rob, just looking ahead, will we get revised resolutions?
Um, we're we're just.
We still have, we still have public comment, but.
Yeah, we were gonna just read them as as we discussed amending them, they will appear when we, that's what I was going over with Christina.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um now we've reached public comment period, um seeing that there is no one in the audience for public comment, I'm assuming that's correct, right? Okay, uh let me ask if there's anyone online for public comment? Any hands raised? No hands are raised online, okay, so now we will get to our consent agenda, Rob, I think you have. Let's see, you read the administrative items, are there any further?
Yes.
Items that you'd like to go over on the consent agenda?
No, I think we, I think we covered everything.
We are all set, okay then. So we will start with the reading of our resolutions, and considering that this is Jeremy's last meeting. I'm gonna ask him to read all of them, except for one which you will recuse yourself from.
Alright. Alright, I will refrain from doing so, and I will try not to get emotional over consent agenda items.
Yes, okay.
It's very, it's very difficult for me.
It will be, I know.
Those minutes back in November really hit home. I move to adopt items one through thirteen as listed in the consent agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. I move to regretfully accept the retirement of Richard Tolliver from his position of field training officer within Newcastle Police Department effective January twenty-fourth. Twenty twenty-six, the town would like to sincerely thank Officer To- uh Officer Richard Tolliver, Ricky, for his thirty-three years of dedicated service to our community, thank you so much.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, I move to accept the retirement of Patricia Pocarelli for the position of part-time intermediate clerk within the Newcastle Police Department effective December thirty-first. Twenty twenty-five, the town would also like to thank you, Trish, for your thirteen years of dedicated service.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of Fernando Rosas for the position of seasonal laborer with the Department of Public Works Water Unit at a rate of twenty dollars per hour. Effective December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. I move to authorize the hiring of the following individuals for the position of recreation attendant to serve as ski ship ski trip chaperones. At the corresponding rates indicated below effective January first, pardon me, January first, twenty twenty-six.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Um, in terms of this, do I need to have the the amounts?
The total dollar amount is there.
Okay, alright, uh I move to authorize the payout of three vacation days for non-union staff for the following individuals. For a total amount payout amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and four dollars eighty-one cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Do you have to do that one?
Um, I move to authorize.
Oh, no, no, you.
No, no, no.
I'll do so, so.
You can do it anyway, cuz it's broken.
Yeah, I move to authorize the appointment of Tama Bomba, Kathy Woods Brown, Izzy Levine, Melissa Levine, and Usha Subramaniam. As members of the Arts and Culture Committee for a two-year term effective January first, twenty twenty-six through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me take the next one.
Um, okay.
I move to adopt the following resolution, um now therefore be a resolve that I hereby appoint the following individuals as members of the Economic Revitalization Advisory Task Force. For a one-year term effective December tenth, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Um Hunter Berman, Carolyn Boss, Lauren Cooper, Eric Denenberg, Masha Gregorius, Michael Kadoche, Meredith Kennedy Forrest. Barry Mishkin, Jeremy Soland, Sarah Yakin, Adam Zellner. Kao Schlegel as staff liaison and Holly McCall as town board liaison and Victoria Tip as town board liaison.
Second. Um, I just wanna read the the mission statement, so that you know this is an important new task force, um do you wanna read it?
I think, I think we did that when we established it.
We did, but this one is slightly different, but um.
Oh, I'm happy to read it.
Go ahead.
Be a further resolve that the formal mission statement of the Economic Revitalization Advisory Task Force is hereby adopted as follows. The town of Newcastle recognizes that a strong dynamic in welcoming downtown is essential to the social, cultural, and economic well-being of our community. In order to sustain and grow a prosperous local economy, support our small businesses, and create an inviting environment for residents and visitors. The town has established an Economic Revitalization Advisory Task Force to advise the town board on efforts that strengthen our commercial districts. Foster community collaboration and promote long-term vitality. The mission of the Economic Revitalization Advisory Task Force is to identify and advise the town board on strategies that revitalize the retail and commercial areas. Of our town by supporting existing local businesses, attracting new enterprises, and enhancing the overall vi- vibrancy of our downtown. Members of the task force will work collaboratively with residents, business owners, and community stakeholders to gather ideas, understand challenges and opportunities. And ensure that proposed initiatives reflect our community's shared values and long-term vision. Through inclusive engagement and thoughtful planning strategies, the task force will strive to help our town become a vibrant and thriving place to live, work, play, and visit.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You wanna finish it up, Rob, Jeremy?
Uh, I move to authorize, uh pardon me, I move to authorize the award of a bid for two thousand twenty-six coach bus transportation. Services utilized for recreation program to J and R Tours Limited LTD for corresponding prices as reflected below.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Um, do I do I need to read the whole thing for this, or, cuz it's it's comes across awkward if you don't.
Um.
Let me see.
I think we usually do it.
Yeah, so let me read the whole thing, okay.
I guess, I guess you're really, um.
Alright, this is a resolution to adopt a two thousand twenty-six preliminary budget with amendments to non-union uh salary schedule. Uh, I move to adopt the following resolution, resolved, Newcastle Town Board hereby adopts a preliminary budget and salary schedule. Amended as per the attached memo as a final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Be a further resolve that the twenty twenty-six final budget for the general and highway funds set forth a total tax levy of eighteen million one hundred twenty-one dot. Eighteen million one hundred twenty-one thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars, and be it further resolved. That the two thousand twenty-six final budget for the solid waste district renews the annual dwelling unit charge of six hundred eighty-seven dollars twenty-seven cents per. Residential unit, be it further resolved that with regard to condominium complexes with adequate refuse storage capacity as determined by the Commissioner of Public Works, the two thousand twenty-six final budget. For the solid waste district renews the annual dwelling unit charge of six hundred eighty-seven dollars twenty-seven cents. Per condominium residential unit for those condominiums which remain or change to once a week collection, and be it further resolved. That with regard to condominium complexes with limited refuse refuse storage capacity as determined by the Commissioner of Public Works, the twenty twenty-six final budget. For the solid waste district renews the annual dwelling unit charge of four hundred twelve dollars thirty-six cents. Per condominium residential unit for those condominiums which were made at twice a week collection, I favor myself.
Ah, Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Now before we leave, I have a question, I wonder if we need to go back to item seven, um the Revitalization Advisory Task Force. We should have had an abstention, I, we didn't make that clear.
I just didn't vote, I didn't say anything, do I have to formally abstain?
Right, do do I?
Well, for just as to your own appointment, that's all.
Okay, so I can I can raise the rest.
Do we have to go back, or can we just?
No, I don't go back, I was just an event.
The.
So I'm staying as the byline appointment.
I saw you. Yeah, cuz I saw you reading, you talked to her, so we.
Yeah, okay.
Cuz you didn't say I, so so, I, we just want to have that noted as an abstention.
I stick up for.
Right.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. And I will leave, before we do this, again, thank you everyone for having me serve, thank you for everyone in the town board, thank you for all the staff members across the. Every every job discretion in our town, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
And I move to adjourn.
Suzie, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.